Good morning. My name is Jim Hanley. I'm the president of the Board of the St. Mary's Library Trustees. Welcome to our May meeting. We're going to introduce ourselves and I'll start, we'll do it alphabetically. We have one member who won't be here and one other member who's online. So we'll begin alphabetically with Michael.
Good morning. I'm Michael Dunn. It's great to be in person with most everybody today.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Guy. It's also nice to be here in person with everyone. I'm vice president of the Board.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Hallenstein. I'm treasurer of the Board.
John, you're up.
John Walters, member of the Board.
And nevertheless, is always the best is Janice Walters. Janice?
Good morning. Janice Walters, proud member of the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a quorum, both here and in combination with the online. So the first item on our agenda is going to be approval of the April meeting minutes. Log ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes as been provided. If I can get a second.
I'll second.
I had one correction.
Okay, well, let's get to the second. Yeah, then we'll add corrections or whatever. Okay, with seconds, John. Okay, yeah, now any questions, comments for change?
Sorry. There was just a note on there in the treasurer's report that I was trying to add access and it was written for you. It was really for John Walters. It was written for Jim Hanley. I'm trying to provide access to accounts to John.
Okay, so that should be modified. Okay. Since again, we're all, majorities here, indicate by a voice, if you accept the minute says, if you read.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion.
Aye.
Okay, Michael, I'll hand it over to you. Introduce Asset Strategies.
All right. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. David Saunders from Asset Strategies, who is going to talk about some recommendations for change in our retirees' health insurance account, our OPEB as it's called. David, please take it away.
Great. Thank you, Michael, and good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me fine.
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
Yep. Okay, great. So, Michael, just wanted to see how much time I have this morning?
As much time as you need, basically.
Okay, okay. Great. Well, again, good morning, everyone. And I had some follow-ups to our previous meeting last quarter in terms of looking at the portfolio allocation as well as looking at the performance of the portfolio for the first quarter. I'm going to read from the quarterly report for March 31, 2021, and to give a market overview of, you know, what has occurred over the course of the first quarter of 2021. On that page, on the right-hand side, you'll see in the upper part of the page, a breakout of the various U.S. equity indices, starting with the Russell 3000, which is the broad domestic equity market. Just a little background on the environment that we were in, we saw the bond yields increase by roughly 80 basis points or so over the course of the first quarter, which caused some concern, certainly in terms of inflation. But I think most of that growth was out of the expectation that the, you know, that the economy would start to get back to some level of normalization as, you know, talks of stimulus as well as vaccines were, you know, beginning to roll out. So that anticipation of economic growth certainly impacted the markets and investors where they wanted to invest. And so, as you can see here in the chart, upper right chart, the, you know, the large-cap portion of the domestic equity markets, which I'll use the Russell 1000 as the proxy there at roughly 6% growth. But if you go down to the smaller-cap end of the market, the Russell 2000, we saw much stronger growth at 12.7%. So over the past 10 years or so, we've seen this phenomena of growth outperforming value, and what that has been driven by technology as the primary catalyst. But this expectations for, you know, for growth in the longer term, the pandemic certainly supported that as everyone was working from home. And these Zoom calls that we're on now were certainly prevalent. So we saw strong growth, you know, particularly last year during the pandemic from the technology sector. But what we've seen over the last two quarters is value starting to outperform growth. So we've seen a turn that in style that has been, you know, pretty prevalent over the last 10 years. As you can see in the Russell 1000 value, it was up 11.3% versus the Russell 1000 growth up, you know, 0.9%. So we've seen this transition continue as, again, this idea that the economies will start to improve from the depths of the COVID virus pandemic. And so we've seen a broader opportunities across various economic sectors beyond technology. And this, if you happen to see this, if you have this in front of you, on the left-hand side, the last bullet in the top section there, this idea of the reopening of the economy, you know, sectors like airlines, retail REITs, and hospitalities have certainly benefited as, again, this anticipation that people will begin to travel. We've certainly seen that as airlines begin to ramp back up and start to fill capacity. And, you know, energy, oil prices, despite the Colonial Pipeline, was starting to gain, yes, some momentum. So energy formed very well as a sector. Financials, as, you know, interest rates improved, you know, banks are able to, you know, generate, you know, stronger profits. So a nice rotation, you know, from this growth phenomenon that we have experienced over the last 10 years. But also, you know, the good news for the portfolio is that we've had, we have exposure, you know, across styles and market cap. So again, you know, our job, my job is not to try to call where things are going to occur, but to have exposure in those areas so that there's not this timing mechanism that we're trying to time the market, but have exposure across the board. It's all in there. If there's any questions regarding the markets, I'll be happy to answer them. So I'll take a moment. If there's no questions, we'll, you know, begin to look at the portfolio. You know, one of the things that we want to do on a quarterly basis is look at our portfolio allocation. And so if you have the report on page nine, here is our fund allocation. And here, we're showing the various asset classes that we have exposure to, the current balance, dollar balance, the allocation, current allocation. This is as of March 31. Our policy allocation, we'll look at this policy allocation again when we look at the asset allocation update that I have to share. And so this policy is what we will, you know, will guide our allocation. But we also have a policy range, which is roughly 5% above and below that policy. And that's the next to the last column. Then the very last column will tell us whether we're out of range or within range. And so we're within our ranges across all of our asset classes. Then the final thing on this page, you can see that as of March 31, the value of the portfolio is at roughly 1.3 million. And just as a reminder, I think when we started managing or advising on this portfolio, I think the value was at 400,000. And I think that was back in 2012 or 2013. So we've seen some strong growth, certainly benefited from the, you know, the equity market exposure and, you know, how those markets have grown over the last 10 years. The next page I'll go to is page 11, and this is looking at the portfolio performance. And you can see on the far left, we start with the quarter, and then we look at annualized returns over the subsequent timeframes. In the peer universe, just to clarify there, at the top of the chart, you can see that this fund is being compared by other public defined benefit plans that are less than $50 million. And these returns are net of fees. So for the quarter, the portfolio was up 3.92%. It was ranked in the 17th percentile. Our target benchmark, which takes into account those policy allocations, is a passive index that's weighted by the asset allocation as stated in the investment policy statement, which was on that previous page, page nine. So for the quarter, we beat our benchmark. We were in the 17th percentile for the last year, strong 37.7% return, 44th percentile, beating the benchmark. And then looking at longer periods for the last seven years, the portfolio was up 7.32%, 85th percentile again. And then the slightly underperforming the bit near our target benchmark of 7.85%. Our, in looking at the investment policy statement, I hope we were able to share that with everyone. Our target return is 7.5%. That's the dated expected return for the portfolio. I've been working with Michael, I guess, for the past year and a half. So part of the process of me, of my getting up to speed on the portfolio is understanding, you know, that document and making changes where needed. And that's one of the things that we can address, that I'll bring to the committee as we go through asset allocation, because that's really a key driver of, you know, what our benchmark, what we want to be on a long-term basis. We're a little bit below that on a seven-year basis, but we're quite above that on a five-year basis, where the portfolio returned 9.31% versus 9.8% for the benchmark.
What?
There are no questions?
David?
We'll look at the portfolio.
I'm sorry, David, can I ask a question? And I think, please excuse my ignorance. Can you just unpack how this chart works? Just because I am, this is not in my wheelhouse, and I'm confused about these different layers of the rectangles. That's probably the technical term rectangle. Can you help me understand what's going on in this chart?
Yeah, absolutely. So on page 11, the chart above, the table that has the returns, these are percentile rankings of the peer group. So in the, one of the issues that you can have in trying to map these changes is if there's not a big dispersion amongst the managers in the peer group, then that you're going to see that, you know, that box more, you know, another technical term, squashed versus, say, for the one year where there's a larger dispersion. So these, you know, these boxes and ranges change over time just given the environment. So you can see that, you know, the tracking error or band around returns around the average has been relatively tight. I'll use a three-year timeframe as an example. You can see here, the median return was 10.7%. And the top return, that fifth percentile, was 12.6%. So there's about a 2%, less than 2%, you know, 2 and 1/2% dispersion between the best return and the median return. And between the median return and the lowest return, that 95th percentile is again about, you know, less than 200 basis points, so 2%. So, you know, because you can't, if it was, if there was a wider dispersion, then that the box would be more elongated, like for the one year. But it just so happened for these time periods that that dispersion has been quite small. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you for unpacking that. I appreciate that.
May I jump in? This is John Walters.
Sure.
Same page, same charts. And looking at the three-year period, so we see the median of this universe that we're being compared in, return of, median return of 10.7. Have I got that right?
Yes.
And then we come down, and we find that in that three-year period, our funds did 9.56. So we were
Correct.
below the median and below our target. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, just to be sure, I understand what's going on here. Thank you.
Sure. And just one thing I will add to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I looked at him, and what I came up with, I tend to look at one year. I didn't realize you could look at a lot of time sequences. But on a one-year basis, and again, I only had an opportunity to look at the last, the previous quarter. And I'll be candid with you. I mentioned to the board, we really didn't have enough time to review all those reports we received. They only came in over the weekend. But that the emerging equity, domestic fixed, high-yield fixed, and real estate are below their indices. And I always use that as a prime criteria.
Are you looking on page, what page were you referring to?
I didn't bring it with me. Again, I have to print it out. I'm looking at the end of the year before December, and I don't know what page it's on. But I think, again, whatever, if you look at it, I think you're going to see the same thing, that for those funds in particular, that we are below our indices.
And that's at the one year.
That could be.
One year. I tend to look at it one year. It's just my preference.
Well, I got to admit, I'm more of a long-view guy. And looking at the seven-year column, I see the median is 8.18. We're at 7.3, and the target was 785. So here we have a portfolio that basically has an unlimited time horizon, right?
Right.
And yet, over seven years, we're kind of shuffling along. That worries me more than one year.
Yes. And so, as you will see, and we discussed briefly last, in our last conversation, that the investment vehicles that we've, that we're using in the portfolio have been passive for the most part. We've got a couple of active managers. And so if you, and I don't, I don't know the details of all the peer group members, the constituents in this peer group. But I would say that there's a high probability that those managers that have, you know, have median or above returns have a higher allocation to active managers. So, you know, certainly the benefit to passive has been lower cost. With that, you know, there could be some sacrifice on excess return. And again, our philosophy has been that, you know, there's certain areas of the market where it is beneficial to be passive versus active. You know, one of the managers I wanted to present to the committee today as an active manager in a small-cap space. So, you know, that has historically been the construction of the portfolio, where it's been majority passively managed. And for that, you know, it's my belief that we do give up some of the, you know, benefit of having the opportunity to, you know, perform in that upper portion of the peer group.
David, I'm kind of new to the, to the Board here, but I don't know how long you've been connected with it. Did you have any history, personal history of how we got more onto the passive side? I mean, did we cheap out, or was that the recommendation? Or how did we get there as opposed to on the managed side?
Sure. So I'm relatively new to the, you know, to the portfolio. But I know that my predecessor started with, again, when the assets were, you know, say, $400,000. So it was a small but growing, the idea of growing it. So the benefit of going passive, I think, was the ability to keep a low-cost option and grow the portfolio as best we can in a most cost-effective way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before we go into the portfolio? Again, I apologize for getting this out to everyone so, so late. We had a update in our portfolio performance package. We switched from a vendor that is, and you can look back to the last presentation, it was a totally different, you know, portfolio report that I, that I shared with you. But this is the more enhanced version that we've uploaded the portfolio data to. So it took a little longer than anticipated. So my apologies for getting this out to you so late and not having, maybe not having an opportunity to review it as, you know, as in-depth as you would like. But I'm going to page 14, and this is the meat of the portfolio.
David, can we pause at 13 for a half a second?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm looking at the three years ending March 31, and I'm looking at five years. And I see our fund is the square, and
Yes.
the dot is the annualized standard deviation there. Would you, would you agree that the use of the funds we are in now is what has consigned us to the southeast corner when we really want to be in the northwest corner of both these charts?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. Do you think that if we shifted over to something more active, a collection of more active, we could eventually wind up in the northwest quadrant over, not just the short, but the longer term?
Yes, definitely. That's, again, thank you for that segue, because one of the things I'd like to do is to look for active managers that can get us in the upper-right quadrant. And as you pointed out, you know, one of the things that the passive allocation has done has kept our volatility, our standard deviation, you know, relatively low. But we haven't, you know, as a total portfolio, haven't had that, you know, strong excess return that would get us up into the upper-right quadrant. So we've controlled risk volatility in the portfolio. But now I think that, just given where we are in the market, particularly in the equity markets, an opportunity to look for some active managers and have an opportunity to shift that, you know, that square to that upper-right area of the, you know, of that scatter diagram.
The upper-left.
Well, upper-left or upper-right, but you certainly want to be above that, above on the north side of that annualized return line, that 10% for the three years, and slightly below 10% on the, but I think the upper-left, certainly you're def-controlling, you're lowering your standard deviation and improving your returns. Upper-right would be maybe slightly higher volatility, but you're also getting, you know, higher returns. So I would say left or right, but certainly, given, you know, again, this is a conversation that we can have to where the level of comfort is with the committee is whether we want to be to the left or the right of that, you know, that standard deviation line there at about 12%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, I want to go to page, you know, this is page 14. And this is the, you know, the meat of the portfolio here. The total fund information is, these are the return numbers that we spoke of on page 11. And again, look, you know, we have a long-term view as well, but we like to, you know, certainly we'll cover the quarter just to see what, you know, what may have underperformed. And certainly for the quarter, with a 3.92% return, we beat our target return of 3%. But there were some, you know, some lagging allocations within the portfolio. And so for the quarter, we can see we outperformed, from an asset allocation standpoint, six of the nine asset classes that we have exposure to. The one, one of the underperforming allocations, excuse me, was in the small-cap or smid, small-cap mid allocation. That's right below the large-cap equity. And the gray bars is the delineation between the different asset classes. So if you go down to the small-mid equity area, that's 10.4% of the portfolio. That allocation generated a turn, a return of 12.2%, while our benchmark for that asset allocation, the S&amp;P 600 small-cap was 18.24. Again, if you remember, we talked about the markets and how well the small-cap area of the market. We looked at the Russell 2000 as the proxy for the small-cap market. Here, our proxy is the S&amp;P 600. So our passive allocation in small-cap is Schwab U.S. Small-Cap ETF. And this ETF is about 1,800 small-cap stocks. It's passively managed against the, I think they use the Dow Jones MSCI Domestic as their passive index, was the, was the underperformance. And this is an area that I think that we can add an active manager. And there's a manager that I wanted to present as a replacement for the Schwab U.S. Small-Cap ETF, as an opportunity to, again, add a manager that's added value over time, that doesn't take any excess risks. So to John's point, we can move that, you know, look for ways to move that, the total return back up to the upper-left part of that scatter diagram quadrant that we were looking at previously. The next area, the next asset class that underperformed is on page 15. It's the high-yield fixed income allocation. Actually, we got a negative 0.11% return from our Vanguard High-Yield Corporate return versus a 0.85% return from its passive benchmark, which is the Bloomberg U.S. High Yield Benchmark. Again, 4.4% of the portfolio is allocated in high yield. Then our final underperforming allocation was in real estate. Again, we have a passive Schwab U.S. REIT ETF as our allocation. Nice positive return, but it underperformed the benchmark that MSCI U.S. REIT by about 22 basis points for the quarter. The remaining asset allocation for the quarter, all were contributing. Our TIPS allocation on page 16 was negative, relatively in line with its benchmark. So we, you know, with anticipation of inflation over the remainder of this year, this asset class, you know, couldn't do well for us. But we have a 5% allocation of TIPS as it stands right now in the, in the portfolio. So that's the, you know, the portfolio and where we stand from an allocation standpoint, and then the performance of our manage, our allocations within each asset class. I'll stop there before I move on to see if there's any questions on performance among the allocation within the portfolio.
Is it appropriate to make these changes about active managers based on, on just one quarter's worth of performance?
No, that, that's a great question. And again, just keeping with the theme that we're looking long-term. So there were, you know, in my opinion, there are, you know, a couple of ways of look at making manager changes. It's either, you know, they're underperforming, bad performance, or It's either, you know, they're underperforming, bad performance, or there's a tactical change that you want to make, that you are anticipating an opportunity that has maybe played out in the past. There's a change anticipated going forward that you want to make sure you have exposure to, to take advantage of that, you know, anticipation. So it's not always performance-driven. You know, there's other organizational risk or changes that we are, that we are tuned to that would, you know, that would cause us to make a change. If, you know, there's a significant amount of assets that are lost by a manager, if a portfolio manager or key investment professional leaves a firm, you know, that would cause a concern to potentially move from a manager that's not related to performance.
David, I'm curious. Yeah, you're right. I mean, there are many factors that go into it, fund managers, changes, and so forth. But in your view, when you look purely at performance, what's that delta to determine if a fund is underperforming? Because obviously, they fluctuate. But what does that drive to the stage you want to say, look, we need to change this?
Yeah. It's really, there's not an absolute number. I mean, there's a number of factors that go into that. And certainly, we take management changes seriously because we don't want to disrupt the efficacy of the total portfolio. Each manager has a specific, you know, position in the portfolio. And so, you know, the upfront work of understanding how a manager is expected to perform in different market environments is an important part of the process for us to understand those dynamics. And so rather than looking at deltas, you know, we look at managers relative to their peers. You could have an environment where, you know, the benchmark's outperforming, you know, the peer group. We've seen that, or we've seen a manager that has a slightly different strategy than their peers, which was, which attracted us to them. So taking that into consideration is an important factor. But I think more importantly is, you know, when does our patience wear out in terms of managers? And really, the final for us as we look at expected performance from our managers, if they're not performing as we had expected them to, then that would really be, you know, kind of the last straw for us. And so I don't know if I answered the questions directly, only because there's really no, you know, if they perform, you know, horribly, about thousands of basis points underperform, certainly that would be a key. But I think as you, you know, look at a tracking error that's, you know, within a couple hundred basis points, and, you know, what that timeframe is, that certainly would, you know, cause us to have more conversations with the manager, understand what's going on.
Thank you.
David, in terms of strategy, would you say that our past strategy has been predicated upon keeping generally low cost and a fairly conservative strategy? And if that's so, would the changes you're recommending fundamentally change that strategy?
I would say yes. That was the, I would imagine that was the strategy when the portfolio started. I think it was something, something that we wanted to keep simple but effective so we can have exposure across different styles, market caps, and markets. And so that hasn't changed, but I think as the portfolio's grown, it's grown to a size where we can, you know, add active managers in some of the less efficient markets. So one thing that has not changed is that we are certainly wanting to, you know, grow the portfolio over, you know, this is a multi-decade, you know, long, you know, investment time horizon. So we want, you know, we don't mind taking risks, but we think that taking risks should be measured and well-thought-out. And so while we think there's an opportunity to keep some of the portfolio passive, we also think there's also opportunities to go active. And, you know, some of the things that we think about in making that decision is, number one, you know, where are the markets, you know, less efficient? And so we, it's our philosophy that, you know, the small cap markets, emerging markets, and some of the international markets are areas of opportunity for active managers to add value. Again, on the fixed income side, we think that, you know, given our low-interest rate environment, having active managers that can reposition the portfolio as interest rates begin to rise, and looking for those opportunities in this low-interest rate environment on the fixed income side is another area of opportunity. So that's what I'm looking at as we move forward to bring these type of ideas to the committee, so that, again, we're able to take advantage of some of the, you know, these macro dynamics that are playing out here currently over the long term, as opposed to just having a passive, you know, opportunity in these markets where, again, if interest rates, when interest rates, we don't know when that's going to happen, start to rise, that we're not, we're not overextending on our duration on the fixed income side, that we have a manager there that's able to navigate that and, you know, manage that fixed income portfolio, that you're not caught up in a allocation that's overexposed to, say, U.S. Treasuries, that's just passively managed and, you know, as those bonds mature, they're just reinvested passively.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, again, my experience has been both corporate and more recently down in the nonprofit world. I tend to see, in a very general sense, that corporations tend to be more risk-oriented than public funds. I think it's an underlying philosophy that seems to permeate quite like this.
With that thought on the table, if we go back to page nine, and if my calculator is correct here, in the target allocation, it looks to me like the target is approximately 42% assigned to equities, which means that the other 60-some-odd percent would be assigned to fixed income and/or cash. If that is correct, that is an extremely conservative portfolio, on top of which we have passive funds down in there. And I think both of those things at some point we'll have to look at to see if the current target model, as shown on page nine, is really what we want to be doing.
Yep, that's a great conversation, and that fits well into the next topic I'd like to cover on asset allocation. I think, John, you mentioned that last, last time. It's looking at, you know, how can we increase our equity in the portfolio and what the impact that might have on, you know, the expected return and volatility? So I was able to update that, and I can, we can discuss that now and maybe talk a little bit more about that, you know, topic of conversation, you know, right now. And again, it's not that we have to have an answer today, but I think that the fact that we're having these conversations, we're, you know, we're thinking about the portfolio, and, you know, this doesn't, this does not need to have a knee-jerk reaction to make any dramatic changes. That's not my intention, but to, you know, just to talk this out and make sure that the committee's on board with, you know, how we should proceed going forward.
Well, I think it is a more
So the next
... to talk about, but I think, not at this meeting in particular.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I think that's certainly an issue of asset allocation we need to consider. Do we want to change from the current approach and philosophy or not? But I think that you're right, that's something we needed to spend more time on. I don't want to overburden this meeting with that lengthy discussions. We have it ourselves, talking about it.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So the next package I wanted to touch on, and this is the, it says the 2021 Capital Markets Expectations and Asset Allocation Recommendation. If you remember, on page, page one, we plotted the policy allocation. You can see there under St. Mary's Library, this is our policy allocation that was in the quarterly report. And based on this current allocation, the expected return is 5.52% with a projected standard deviation of, you know, a little under 12%. And then we have our ranges here, which is the same within our, the quarterly report. One of the things that jumped out to me is that the expected return, that 5.52%, is well below what we have stated in the investment policy statement of, I think it was 7%, which is something that we need to marry and make sure that we, when we update, you know, we like to update the investment policy statement, you know, annually. It's been a while, so it's well overdue. So in the, in the investment policy statement, it says our expected return is 7.5%. So depending on what allocation we agree to, and again, we can just update the policy, investment policy statement so that it has a more accurate expected return, and then we can continue to discuss whether we want to change our asset allocation. But, you know, one of the things that I want to do for our next meeting is have that investment policy statement updated so that everyone is on board as to how we want the allocation, you know, going forward. Again, just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork to, to look at an endpoint at how this asset allocation is impacting the investment policy statement, as well as how we look at our quarterly performance on a go-forward basis. So what I did on page two, and I think John brought this up last time, was look at what would be a, you know, an alternative mix to increase our allocation to equities and lower our allocation to core fixed income. And so on this page, again, we're putting beside our policy allocation an alternative mix in increasing our allocation to equity, lowering our allocation to fixed income. And again, this, you know, again, this is a talking point. This may be an extreme, but it, I think what, you know, what I wanted to show to the committee is the impact of expected return and standard deviation as we make these changes. So if we were to change our asset allocation from, you know, the current, I think, 40-60-ish mix to, you know, we're going up into the, let me do the math here, it's probably, well, that's 16, you know, almost
If you pull that 16 out, you've got
74%.
You've got an 84-16 mix.
Yeah.
Way too high.
So, so this is a big jump, but just wanted to, just highlight the magnitude of where it could be. And again, one, one point of reference is that we have policy ranges around that strategic allocation. And so if we were to go to the upper ends of those, this, you know, we wouldn't need to change our strategic allocation, but we would still be able to make changes within those bands around the strategic allocation.
But it doesn't, it doesn't get around the fact that hypothetically, you would have shifted to an 84-16 mix. I don't care how you move the money around within the bands, equity still comes out 84%.
Yes, correct.
Okay, just so it's on the table.
So I guess my question to the, my question to the committee is, what would be helpful for me to look at, either alternative allocation, at what level would the committee feel comfortable in terms of allocating or increasing our allocation to equity and lowering our allocation to fixed income? And I could put some numbers around that, or, you know, look at some different permutations around that.
Well, I don't want to drive the train here, but can I make a suggestion?
Sure, of course.
I think that what I personally would like to see would be a mix, 65% equities, 35% fixed income, that would include cash in that category, with a swing of plus or minus And we could quibble over the bands later, but a 65-35 mix with a 5% swing on either of those numbers.
Okay.
I mean, isn't the efficient frontier 60-40?
Yes, it is.
All right, so 65-35 would be a little edgier than that to begin with, and if we thought things were humming right along, we could push it just to squeak higher. So that's how I come to that, those two ratios.
And I think the point was made earlier in terms of the fact that, again, we're looking at long periods of time, so going, you know, 5% above that 65, to me, is not, is prudent and something that we can look at in terms of, as an allocation option.
Well, we're going to have drift anyway, no matter which way you look at it. But if we did 65, for example, and the market took us up into 70 or maybe a little higher, we'd know it's time to rebalance.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Hey, David, when we're looking at this too, it does also raise the question that do we have too many investments? When you have three funds in particular that are 5% of the portfolio, which comes out to about 60,000 or so, you know, are we too, too many investments for the size of the assets?
The only, so, you know, just for me, the only allocations that for me, I feel, could be incorporated in, you know, the other allocations would be high-yield and TIPS. Yeah, I look at TIPS as certainly as an inflation hedge, but I think that, you know, either real estate or equity have some similar attributes to them. I think that, you know, in the, in the near term, there is a threat of inflation. I don't, I'm not convinced that over the next, you know, three, you know, two to three years or beyond, that inflation would be such that TIPS would add a lot of value on the high yield. I think high yield has, you know, some equity-like characteristics in terms of their volatility. So, you know, incorporating that, you know, those two in equity or real estate could be an option that would, you know, eliminate two parts of the asset allocation and, you know, kind of bring that number down at least by two managers.
Okay, again, I think this is something we need to talk about, or two, in terms of the strategy. But I think it may be something to look at as well as we go forward.
Okay, absolutely. I can, what I'll do is, I mean, we, we've almost incorporated that within the, you know, the other mix there, but I will put that into consideration as we look at the 65-35 allocation in those bands around, that 5% bands around those allocations.
David, a question for you, and that is about contracts. I'm simply not certain where we are. We were previously with the county, and now I do think we probably want a contract in place with asset strategies. That's unique to us.
Yeah, that would be something we would, we would like, and certainly open to answer any questions, concerns that, you know, anyone on the committee has. And I know that, I think, I don't know how, how long you've had the opportunity to review it, but again, Michael or anyone on the committee, we'd love to get that in place and answer any questions that you might have around that.
Well, I haven't seen one, so if you could, could get us
Oh, absolutely.
Could get us that
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that we can take a look at that and have our board approve that contract.
Okay, I apologize, Michael.
For, for many things, it would be operational, and we in administration, our administration can, can sign and, you know, a contract, but for something like this, I think the board needs to review.
I have a question for you. So getting back to your company's relationship with the county, were you advisors on other funds here in, at the county level?
So we were the consultant for, for St. Mary's County, and we were just recently replaced at the beginning of the year 2021. So we're no longer a consultant for St. Mary's County pension.
Okay, so county-wise, we are your only client right now, is that correct? I don't mean on Broadbent County, but us are your only. So I have a question on, about your fee structure. It indicates that your fees are based on a minimum of $10 million, which we obviously don't have, but that fee structure would take into account, quote, "related accounts." It could have been the sheriffs or law enforcement or whomever. Well, without them, what happens to the fee structure?
So the fee structure would certainly be based solely on, excuse me, the, the assets of the library's pension. And so our fees are a, you know, it's based, it's a floating basis point fee that's billed in arrears on a quarterly basis. I think that the proposed fee, and I'll have to go back to look, was 15 basis points on, on the portfolio as it, as it currently stands.
My next question then is, does your firm ever do business with folks like us just on a flat consulting cost basis as opposed to being tied to the valuation of the portfolio?
Sure, it's, we're, we're open to, to consider that for sure. It, it's not, you know, our, our fees, we do have clients that pay fat, flat fees as opposed to, you know, based on the, you know, basis points. So, yeah, that's, that is an option.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if we can see that, then I will pass that along to the board, and we can move forward on that then.
Okay, great. There was one last thing, Michael, I wanted to go over, and I don't know if you have time now, or maybe we table it to, to next meeting, but there was a small cap active manager that wanted to present, and so I'll leave it up to the committee.
That's up to the board, so I will, I will.
I think we should just be brief about it. Let me just point out quickly though, David, upfront, I appreciate John providing most of the information. The only apprehension, the performance of the one you're proposing is, is strong. However, it's a one-person operation basically, and with only $68 billion in assets and only five clients. So I always get concerned about that proverbial bus, and you have someone dependent upon one individual to manage the portfolios.
Mm-hmm.
How did you all find that?
So, so there, you know, we have a number of funnels of information. You know, we have a database of managers that we, you know, that we have access to, but we also use other, you know, other means of, you know, could be committee members like yourself that might point us to a manager, a good manager, they will look into and do our due diligence on. And then the other, the other pieces that sometimes we'll have, you know, different third-party marketers that are, you know, helping managers to, you know, get off the ground and, you know, gather assets. And so, while that, that may sound, you know, less nebulous as to, you know, you know, just data mining, I think the human aspect is understanding those individuals that are managing the money, their background and their philosophies around that. So those are our primary, you know, channels of, you know, getting good managers or being made aware of, you know, different managers. And so Palisades was one of those managers that we were introduced to, that the manager, Quinn Stills, had been managing this portfolio since 2003, and really his, you know, he's, he's gained some momentum in terms of gathering assets. But for him, it was just, you know, the strong performance was the opportunity that, that I was looking at, that he's been able to put up. The strategy is being the core manager that's able to tilt either value or growth depending on markets, and they, and he's got a, a really nice, long track record. So I understand the concerns and that you, you bring up about operationally in terms of the firm, and, but he, he does have, as you mentioned, five firms. One of them is a very large state pension here in the U.S., and, and he's been able to get, you know, gain momentum from that relationship. And, you know, this is not the first time we've, you, you know, we've been at the, you know, I would say the front end of managers, you know, starting to grow and gather assets. And certainly we've seen here in the near term, as, you know, the market has been more volatile, the opportunity for, for, you know, active managers to do well. We think he'll begin to, you know, continue to grow his firm and add professionals. I think he's added, you know, a one and a half kind of full-time employee equivalent to, to his staff over the last, you know, 12 months.
I'm looking at his registration and employment history. He's showing that he has been registered himself since July of 18, and with Palisades Investment Partners since August of 20. I don't know, it's not showing them as earlier. Are you sure he's been managing this money all the way back to when, '03? What did you say?
Yeah, yeah, 2003. Yes, I, I'm sure that, and, you know, that certainly is a question I can go back to understand, the, his SEC registration and when that started for him. And I'm sure I don't have an answer to that.
This is a one-fund family with one guy running it. It also concerns me that he is not just the chief operating officer, he's the chief compliance officer. That screams he'll never get a slap on the wrist from the compliance officer, if you think about it. And they've got a total of five clients. I'm having trouble understanding why a firm like yours would even let something like this float to the top.
Yeah, again, you know, my answer to that would be that, you know, Quinn has, you know, been managing money for, you know, 20-plus years, so he has the experience. And, you know, I, I know that from an operational standpoint, you know, it, it's hard to slap the wrist of the compliance person when, you know, you're the person that's being monitored. But I think that he has a relationship with a bigger firm, the name escapes me, that helps him in terms of his back, back office operationally there. So, you know, for, for bringing the opportunity to the committee was one of opportunistic and with a very, you know, affordable, I mean, they're, the fee that they, that on his small-cap core strategy is 45 basis points, which is attractive, and the performance is there, and just wanted to print, present it to the committee as an opportunity.
Well, I want you to check their website, which is kind of nebulous on a lot of these points, but it does say they take a long-term view, and yet on the, the condensed sheet that you presented us last time, they have a supposed turnover between 40 and 50%. I don't see how that squares with having a long-term view.
And part of that turnover is trims and adds, so, you know, while it may not be a complete selling of the stock, where you're selling all your positions, it also incorporates trims and adds. If a, you know, certainly if a, a stock has grown over time, it'll trim it back to a more appropriate level. So that's part of that turnover ratio, the 40 to 50% in that number.
Again, I don't want to overburden this committee with, because we have a lot of items to touch upon, and I think we're not at a point where we're ready to make a decision. I think two of us have a concern with that particular fund from a different perspective, and mine is the bus issue. We need to determine, are we going to make any changes to the asset allocations? We need to see a contract. I mean, a lot of things that are out there, so I'd like to see us hold off on any decision regarding this particular fund until we get all these other things straightened out. I don't think we're posing any great risk for the fund itself by staying where we are currently.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion that we hold, hold fast on any decision regarding this fund.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I would suggest that, in the interim, look at, if, be prepared for submitting a second fund, if, or at least a comparative fund, when we go back to this.
Absolutely. I can, we can add a couple more funds in there for comparative purposes. I'll follow up with the updated asset allocation as Jim proposed, looking at a 65-35 allocation, equity to fixed income and cash, and some 5% bands around that as consideration. And then updated contract, we'll send over to Michael and have him share that with, with the committee.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Yep, thank you very much.
Well, thanks, everyone, for your time. Good seeing you again. Maybe one day we can be in the same room here. It's like the odds are improving for that, so I look forward to that. And in the interim, if you have any questions, you know, Michael can feel free to reach out to me, and we'll, we'll get those answers covered for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Bye, have a good day.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, we move on to the items on the agenda, the EALs. I'll make the motion to accept the EALs invited. Do I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments about the report? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, question carries. Okay, Sandy, you're up.
Okay, before I go through the actual report, I just wanted to update you. I am working on adding John to have you access to our online account. I got ahold of someone with Vanguard last week, and I just needed John to answer a couple of questions for me, and hopefully by next month, I can tell you that he has access to the accounts to at least see what's going on there. As you'll see, our dividends continue to be on a decline with this account, so I'm hoping he can maybe help us figure out a way to fix that. So for opening balance on the PNC checking account, our opening balance on April 15th was $710. There were no deposits or withdrawals, and the balance on May 12th was $710. For our Vanguard investment accounts, on the original account, the value on April 15th was $75,921.35. There were no deposits or withdrawals. The share price at that time was $10.68. We own 7,108.741 shares for a yield of .63%. On May 12th, the value was $75,737.17. Share price was $10.65. Shares owned 7,111.471. A dividend of $29.18 was paid on April 30th, bringing dividends paid to date in 2021 on that account to $171.91. That was a yield of .58% and a decline in share price of 3 cents. For the Rudolph account, on April 15th, the value was $18,819.95. No deposits or withdrawals. Share price was $10.68. Shares owned 1,762.168 for a yield of .53%. On May 12th, the value was $18,772.76. Shares owned 1,762.700. A dividend of $5.69 was paid on April 30th, bringing dividends paid to date on that account in 2021 to $36.43. There was a yield of .48%, .48%, and the change in share price was minus 3 cents.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept the treasurer's report. Do I get a second?
Second.
Carolyn, okay, questions, comments? Okay, the motion carries. Only indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, I'm up next, the Smaller Report. Really, not a lot, and again, a lot of things we do in the Smaller meeting relate to the internals of the operations there. The most significant thing was the approval of the RFID project, which is something we've been talking about for a number of years. But I'm going to leave it up to Michael, because that's on the agenda, and he can go with it much more definition is, what is RFID, I'm sure, and much better than I can. But that's really pretty much the, the total of the Smaller Report. Okay, Michael, then you're up.
Oh, thank you very much. First, we'll go ahead and take a look at the budget, and we'll see that there are several lines that have gone into the negative, which is not surprising since we're in, you know, the 11th month of the fiscal year. And later on, we'll take a look at places we will want to have you approve to move some money around, since we require that as, as a board matter. But, so taking a quick look at the budget, you'll see that one area that's gone negative is administrative health insurance. And the reason for that is that we moved some IT staff from the branches into admin because they were not serving any one branch, they were working across the system. And one of those people added insurance for this year after we had set the budget, which you were able to do under, you know, circumstances like that. So that's the reason for that negative amount there, and we'll talk about later, as I say, how we can begin to address that. Telephones, we've moved over from some kind of, some independent systems, and all the branches are now on the county system, and there's been some cost involved with that. So that's why those are down a little bit. We've seen some increase in the cost of water and in trash removal. So some of those budgets, one of them, Lexington Park, is negative, and others are going down. Increase in gas costs, and you wouldn't think that you would see much when the branch would be in many cases closed, but we are seeing some of that. So those are some areas where we'll be asking you to make some adjustments. The sort of other area that's going to be a little problematic for us, it's not negative right now, but its office supplies on page two, that's account 60200, is at $970, and Belinda tells me that we've already got expenses that will drive that down below the negative amount. We'll look later at some areas where we can take some money and we think we're doing okay. Relevant to today's conversation, if you look at the OPEB, which is down below, close to the bottom, you see that we've still, we start off with $99,000 in that account. We've asked the county for more, but we've not been able to get that. So we have about $20,000 remaining in there. If we do not dip into our fund balance for the year, that money would get put into the account. And we, you know, we, we have 1.3 million, but 3.3 million is the target for that fund. How we're ever going to get there, I don't know, but we do try to invest a little bit of money in it as we can. So overall, we're still, you know, still on track for not going into the negative on the year, and we'll have to see what expenses come. I'd like us to spend up all the materials budget, which is circulation services, and currently there's about $90,000 left. We want to make sure that's at least all encumbered for the year, and we can increase digital funding if nothing else. So any questions about the budget other than? So any questions about the budget, other than how are we going to balance out those lines, which we're going to come to?
I guess you're not anticipating anything now, because we're still not at the end of the fiscal year. The, any significant expenses will come in in the next month, month and a half?
Well, we will certainly be looking to spend up the materials budget, but we're not looking at anything really big coming up in terms of the expenses for the year. Most things have been taken care of that are really large. There'll be some grant funding that will have to go out before the end of the year. We have another, I guess we've just spent, I don't know if it's reflected in this or not, let me take a look. Yeah, so the ebook grant, we just spent twelve thousand dollars out of the grant to help stabilize that app, the Simply E app. In terms of funding coming in, we're, you know, we've got a hundred percent from the state, and the county, we've got one more payment to come up from them, so we're doing okay here.
Can I ask about?
Obviously, way down will be services, income, fines. Those kinds of things are, in a year when we've spent so much time closed or forgiving fines, we can't really expect to see a lot there.
Can I ask about the FNE new, which is at a hundred and nineteen percent? It's a smaller number, but what's going on there?
What line are we on, please?
At the, under total FNE new, at the bottom of the second page.
Furniture and equipment, I'm sorry, yeah, that's another line where we're down. That's just some purchasing that we did for the new library. There's an additional desk that we put in there, so some of that, and that came from our expenses and not county expenses.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll have to bring that one up, too.
Michael, may I ask a question, please?
I'm sorry?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the first page, on total electric, how does, how does Lexington Park, what gives it, they've spent almost fifty-five thousand dollars spent to date? I know they, they're running behind on the, on the year-to-date, that's good, but why fifty-four thousand? Do they heat that place electrically?
Yes, we do have high electrical expenses there, and it also includes running a lot of computers and things like that, but yes, that's the, that's the source of that cost.
Okay.
I mean, it's a twenty-five thousand square foot building, so I don't think that those unusual, or certainly, it's not unexpected.
Are we going to see numbers like that for Leonard Town?
We think it's going to be a more efficient system, but as I'll review in just one second, the county is actually giving us some more money for Leonard Town to, to offset that cost. And that's a good segue for me, thank you. The county budget will be made basically final tomorrow, although, of course, the process of getting it enacted is going to be slightly longer than that. But there will be a final budget work session tomorrow, which I will attend, and we write in this very room. And I don't anticipate them changing anything about the library. They gave us an additional twenty-four thousand dollars to offset potential utility costs, and some of that will go into the telephone systems and other places. But yes, we're anticipating an increase in costs for the new Leonard Town library. We do split costs there with the senior activity center, which will, when they really get going, they're going to have that, that kitchen, which will use more water and more electricity, but, but we do split the cost with, with them. It's not all on us, but we're anticipating an increase in costs for that, and that money will offset that cost. The other thing they funded is a step increase for staff, and so we're looking about an additional one hundred and eleven thousand dollars coming in from the county over what we got for this fiscal year, and we're very grateful for that. The state is giving us about an additional twenty-four thousand over what we got this year. So we will put together a budget for you for June, for you to, what we think it's a pretty good idea what's going to be, and ask you to approve that for the, for the following fiscal year. The one thing that we'll ask you to consider then, but we'll have a better idea perhaps in July, and of course, budgets are fungible and you could change it, whether or not you wish to give staff a cost of living allowance increase, and that will be based, I think, on whether or not we dip into our fund balance for this fiscal year. In terms of a legislative session update, the one thing we're still waiting on in terms of library legislation, it was a pretty good year for libraries in general, in that we saw an increase of the capital fund to, from five to seven point five million, and we had the legislation that St. Mary's County was kind of instrumental in, which is that digital content legislation. Currently, it's still sitting on the governor's desk. He has until June to either sign off on it, let it go into legislation without his signature, or vetoing it. My understanding, based on a somewhat cryptic email, is that somebody challenged the legality of it, the constitutionality of it, so that the governor has to have an appeal from the attorney general. It's almost never the case that the attorney general comes back and says, yes, this is clearly a violation of the Constitution, or clearly illegal.
What?
I'm sorry?
To do what would be the violation?
Well, the, I'm not privy to that, but the argument that came originally from the Association of American Publishers about that bill was that it's a violation of copyright because copyright owners should be able to sell their works wherever they want and have complete control, and this said the library was taking control and therefore violating copyright. The response from the American Library Association attorney was that, no, this is simply setting up a framework under which we will have access to content, that we will not own the content, that the content will continue to be licensed as it always has, as digital content always is, and that this is not a violation. But I assume that the attorney general then needs to take a look at the arguments. I, I think that it's likely that this bill is going to become, sort of, one way or another will pass into law.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty confident about that. Haven't heard anything from the lobbyist we hire that would indicate anything different. And there's a lot of people waiting in the library community to see what happens with this. Rhode Island has put forward its own legislation, which has actually got a couple of things in it that are more aggressive than ours. And Washington State, Virginia, so a group from Virginia just left a voicemail message for me, they want to talk. Connecticut is probably going to put legislation forward, so I think that this has been a, an example of libraries looking at ways to move forward in a way that we really haven't had much power or much ability to, to talk. And really, this doesn't give us that much more, it simply says that you will allow us to have the content. It doesn't preempt any contracts or talk about ways that we could more efficiently use this content, and we'll have to see what happens. I will be on a session at two o'clock today, which won't be, it's being taped, it won't be broadcasted later, talking about this as a kind of a national library issue. But I'm encouraged that this legislation, I'm, I think is going to pass. But there is some legislation that will be put forward for libraries next year. It will include an increase in state library funding, SLERC. They do a lot of programming and offer some databases and services that we are hoping to get an increase for. It's also going to include an increase for public libraries. Currently, the increased amounts that are in state law are going to run out after next fiscal year, so we're going to want legislation in place to try to continue, and it's, it's never very much. It's usually about twenty to forty cents per person, you know, per capita, but that's how we get a little bit more each year, in this case, about twenty-six thousand more. We want those increases to continue at the state level, so we'll be having legislation that will be going into effect, or that we'll propose and hope we can get passed for next Questions on that? All right, a reopening update. It was simply going to talk about quarantining in our meeting rooms, and after the governor changed the guidelines, obviously, that's become a larger conversation. We are stopping quarantine of materials, and Smurl is as well. So in Southern Maryland, we're not going to quarantine the materials anymore. We had been holding them for two days and storing them in the meeting room, so we're going to discontinue that and begin to move the furniture out of the meeting rooms that has been stored there, and open the meeting rooms, and our plan for that is July. So we'll put the meeting rooms open for full public use then. It'll be the same sort of situation as our study rooms, in that we're not going to be cleaning them between uses, it will be on people to be responsible. If they are concerned about virus on the surfaces, we'll provide cleaning cloths that they can use. But again, the, the very abrupt change last week has kind of made us go back to a drawing board and exactly what that will be. I think they're just going to be open for uses they always were. So the governor last Friday afternoon, and then the county on Saturday followed up, basically reopening, and here we sit without masks in this room. It's now your comfort, and so we, very quickly, at the library, needed to think about what our response to that would be. I didn't really want the, the staff opening up on a Saturday morning and having no guidance. So we basically have adopted a policy that our staff will continue to mask. We've still got safety concerns. Children are still not being vaccinated in the county for the most part, although the age at which you can get a vaccination is being lowered. Our staff are almost all largely vaccinated. We have a couple of people who have a medical exemption. We do have those air filters in place, but we still think it's a good idea to continue masking, so we have, however, made it optional for our customers. They may, if they come in and they don't have a mask, we'll offer them one very politely. If they say, no, I'm not interested, then we're going to let them come into the library. With the governor's and now the county, sort of guidelines be what they are, although the governor says that individual businesses can set their own policies, I think it's simply very problematic for us to ask our staff to mandate mask wear when it's not required by the county. That, that's got the potential to set up a lot of hostile interactions, and that it will result if we mandated mask wear, in people complaining to our funding agencies. I was asked, well, can we have the exemption as, that schools have, and I don't think that will stand up. We call ourselves educators, and we are, but I don't think it will stand up that we are a school and therefore can mandate mask use. So currently, where we are is letting the public in. What we're finding, at least as of Saturday, and the only day I have any kind of reports on, is that most people are continuing to mask, and that that's a comfortable thing for most people. We haven't had any hostile interactions. We did have some people come into Lexington Park who were not masking, so I think that will continue to be the case, and it will be, I think, a good example for the public that our, our staff continues to mask, and we will just see when we go back to having no masking at all among staff. And again, that had to be a very quick turnaround. I see lots of emails coming in from my colleagues across the state. Most of them have adopted a policy very similar to ours. A couple have just said, even among staff, it's now optional. So it looks like a kind of a full return here. Questions on that one? Yes?
Did we ever get to a hundred percent staff vaccination?
No, we have some staff who have exemptions. One person had a medical exemption, another person had such a bad reaction to a first vaccination that the doctor said, you really shouldn't have a second one. So we're not at a hundred percent, but we're very close. And I think that, I'm very proud of our staff for being proactive and willing to take that step.
Thank you.
And it certainly ensures their safety. Even with the vaccination, you can still, of course, contract COVID, but what we're seeing is that the vaccination is effective against the variants that are going around, which is obviously great news, so we don't have to develop boosters and do that. And cases among, you know, people who catch it, even though they've been vaccinated, tend to be much more mild and don't involve typically hospitalization, so we'll continue to mask and be careful. Our staff who handle materials are told they can continue to wear the gloves that we provide, so I think it's just a question of slowly getting back to completely normal. Yes, Michael?
Are, are staff required to mask?
I am still requiring staff to mask, yes.
Even if they are vaccinated?
Um, yes, and that turns out to be that, that the way most people are comfortable. I floated in our staff areas, since everybody was vaccinated and we've got those air filters. Okay, can we make it optional just in staff areas, put it on when you go out there? And the resounding word back to me was, that's not what we want. Okay, so we're going to continue, as I say. It's also, I think, if we're going to, you know, kind of ask that our, the public continue to mask optionally, it sets a good example that our staff are masking.
I just do think it's important that we follow the science here, right? And if someone is fully vaccinated, then I just think it's a bore to follow the science. And I think for the same reason, I'm glad that we're no longer quarantining materials when, you know, I don't think there's been evidence of, of exposure in that way. My, my other question was about when the meeting rooms reopen, that's in July?
Yes, July.
Can I, can I ask, like, why that timeline?
Because that's going to be a good timeline for us to get all the materials out of there and get fully set up and get the reservation system back up again.
I see.
It seems like it's a little too early to press it for June, especially since we made the decision about July before the governor had changed the guidelines. So we can go back and revisit earlier, but that was a decision we made last Wednesday.
Michael?
Yes?
This is Mary Ann.
Hi, Mary Ann.
If we, hi, if we can get it, get everything moved and everything ready, we, I mean, I think the staff is open to doing it sooner than that, but there's a lot of furniture that needs to be moved and rearranging to do.
Can we move that to a June first? Is that too soon?
I think, I think that's too soon, but, but we could maybe do mid-June or something.
All right, let's, let's look at that, and we need to get an announcement out to the public in any case.
Right, we just need to have enough time.
Yeah. So, so could we say June fifteenth? Yes, Janice? Hi, Janice.
I'm just, I, Michael, I mean, I personally trust the judgment of the group and of the, of the administration in terms of giving people time to move materials, I mean, these, and furniture and books or whatever is stored in those rooms, and then it has to be cleaned, so, I mean, whatever's best. I hear Mary Ann saying it may be June fifteen, but.
Well, we had decided, as I say, we decided July first, no matter. Well, we had decided, as I say, we decided July 1, no matter what, because we thought that we could do so safely.
Sounds perfectly.
So let's.
Yeah, I would keep it July 1. But if we can move quicker than that, we'll let you know.
All right, sounds good.
Well, as Janice said, we rely on your judgment.
It's just it's just a question of how quickly we can do that. I mean, on top of there are other duties now, staff have to go into those meeting rooms and and sort out all the materials that are there. And we have to get our furniture all back. And so it was really just a question of of finding the time to get things going. But then, you know, we do have to get the reservation system up and running again. So. And, you know, we too are looking forward to return to full services. Summer reading program is still all going to be mostly virtual, although we're going to have some outside programming. We're starting for the fall to think about adult programming being some in person. But what we're finding with adult programming is that it's been so much more successful virtually in terms of attendance, that we will probably continue virtual, some virtual programming, completely virtual, or offer a hybrid model.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm one of the people that is attending the adult virtual stuff, which I did not do because I didn't want to drive to Lexi or wherever.
Yeah, it's hard to argue with 100 people coming to a session.
It's been great. I'm really looking forward to those being kept up.
In terms of children's programming, you know, obviously, we want to get those story times back. And we're thinking about January for that. But with these relaxations and guidelines, we'll be going back to the drawing board on that one, too. But certainly by January.
Michael?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to tell you all that one of our author visits that we have coming up, I think they said there was almost 500 people registered for it.
Yeah, as I say, it's kind of hard to argue with the the increase in reach that we've had with virtual programming. And the adult programming, you know, the children's program, we really, you know, there's, there's something that the virtual cannot bring the kids, that that interaction, that excitement of being in a room with a bunch of other kids. So we definitely want to go back there. Although some of that programming, you know, we're just going to have to look and see what's what's working and really well in that virtual format and try to continue that. And thank you, Mary Ann. You're welcome. Employees, you're welcome to join the meeting anytime you want. So as I say, we'll have to get, we'll have to do an update to the public on what our new policies and procedures are. And I see on our agenda here, we're going to have to change that, you know, little intro we have there to suit all these these new guidelines. Any other questions about the about the reopening of the library? We're very excited to be doing it. I'd say that we have throughout, you know, kept our eye on the science and been more aggressive than most libraries in Maryland. But then, in many cases, our county did not necessarily see the the level that some other counties did. I'm not faulting any of my colleagues. But we've been pretty bold about it. So I think that as we come out of this, let's hope that these changes don't cause a sudden increase in virus transmission. I think we're coming out of this and we've done, I would say, as well as we possibly could. I don't see how we could have done anything better in terms of our reaction. And here we sit. The last time we were in this room together was February of 2020.
Michael, I would just echo that. I think you and the staff have done a tremendous job navigating through this last 14 months.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll be interested, though, and I'm going to bring it up at the swirl level, too, much deeper into the year and even next year. How are our patrons' changes, change rather, their, what they've done during the pandemic period, how wants to carry over into the following year? So I think it's going to be something we need to be looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a question for libraries across the country, is that as we come out of this, when are people in person going to be wanting to come back more? When are they are the changes to a virtual expectation going to be permanent? I think they are. Certainly, I don't expect to see our digital circulation go down. I think that what we'll see is, I think that what we'll see is that continuing, perhaps growing slightly, but not at the 50% jump we saw during the pandemic. So we'll, when will we start to see people come back? And what will the expectations about programming be? It's going to be a time of transition for libraries across the country, and we need to keep our eye on that. After the 2008 financial crash, libraries saw circulation across the board begin to decline. So far, we, while there's a lot of people out of work, I don't think we've seen quite the same economic difficulties in the country, fortunately, in part because of stimulus. So we need to see what overall effect this will have on library use.
My illustration is a very small segment of it. But as I used to use a drive up window, I could see inside and the number of books or material on hold. Last time I went, it was much smaller volume. So I think that's an illustration of how people are changing and away from the window and now much more willing to go inside.
Oh, I think the window is going to continue to be very popular. And in part, that's because we're storing the materials a little bit differently. But yeah. Well, RFID, radio frequency identification. So what this means for libraries is that you have basically a chip that you put in the physical items. And the main thing it does is it allows far more efficient handling of materials. You can check out a whole stack of books at once. You can check in a whole stack of books at once rather than individually. But it also allows some better inventory taking. You can walk down the shelves with a wand. And ostensibly, we haven't always found in libraries that it works perfectly. You can look and see what's on a shelf. It will compare against what's supposed to be on a shelf. And oh, here's something that's missing. It does allow for better reserve treatment. You can have lockers and it will, when you check something in, it will sort it and say, put it in locker five. We don't have, we're not going to be putting that in place. It allows more efficient materials handling. You can get materials handling systems that will sort things into three bins, five bins. It's got to be an odd number, seven or nine different bins that allow you to, we're really not going to be looking at a materials handling system. They're extremely expensive and you've got to basically plan your library spaces around them. But we are going to be getting tags for the collection. And this should allow a lot more efficient materials handling, just that step alone. So we're grateful that this project is finally coming through. And it can take some time to get the entire collection done. We'll be working with SMIRL on the best process for that. You can have it be sort of outsourced and a vendor will bring a machine in that can do these very quickly. Or it can be done by hand. We'll just have to see, moving forward with SMIRL and Calvert, how this is going to happen. But yes, I'm very happy that that's that's happened finally and grateful that SMIRL is going to be there. We've got three new little free libraries that we're supporting in partnership with community agencies. The Health Department has set up two health clinics in middle schools for serving students, especially students who may not have much other access to to healthcare. And we've put a little free library in each one of those. And so we have middle school and kind of elementary school readings there. The Community Corrections Center is preparing to open. That's people who are out of the correction facility but going back into the community, or who may have some issue that they that they're, you know, they're seeking, they're getting help from the county in that way. And we have set up a little free library there. I got a tour of the Community Corrections Center. It's a lovely facility. And that's adult level. But we've also got children's books there because we'd like either the staff doing home visits, as they sometimes do, to be able to take a present to a child of a book, or parents can take a book for their children home to read with them. So we've got a glut of materials from the Friends because they haven't been able to do a sale. The Friends do have a lot of things online now, so it's a place you can shop to get materials and recommended as a great place to get some content at a very, very low rate. But so we're, we're having that community partnership that's we're continuing with. ARPA grants are due the end of this month. We are going to submit three. And we're looking at a external programming at Charlotte Hall where we really just don't have enough room to do a lot of programming. And that will allow us to do more of some flexible programming. We'll have a covered space out there because the the farmer's market is moving to a new location. And so that will allow flexible and greater amounts of programming at Charlotte Hall. We're looking to set up the the drive through at Lexington Park. There was a drive through that was originally planned for the building. It's never made operational. This will require changing the direction in the parking lot. But we like it because, and having a second exit, it will also create a greater amount of safety. There'll be less traffic crossing both ways. So we think it will make the parking lot a safer place to walk as well. So you'll enter at the current entrance, you'll go straight ahead, you'll be able then to reach through the drive through, which is great for people who have pets in the summer or children, they don't want to get out of the car, and or people who have limited mobility, reach through the drive through there at Lexington Park, continue to drive straight and exit out. It will be a new exit in the parking lot. And both of those projects, we've submitted to the county to get their approval on them and see how we do with that.
So the drive through window would be at the semicircle?
Uh, no, it's just slightly past that.
Oh, okay.
There's a place where there's kind of a brick wall really close. It's not too far from where the staff entrance is. And you'd be able to, as I say, reach right through. And so we anticipating about $50,000 for that, probably about $30,000 at Charlotte Hall. The big project is the mobile library. And I've sent you a very sketchy overview of our first meeting with a consultant. I'm glad we've got a consultant working with us on that project. There's just so much more than we kind of know about. So what we want is starting to take a little bit of shape and can review that fairly quickly. First of all, he can do an RFP for us. And this person is the one who worked with Calvert on their mobile library, and he's got a great reputation. So he can do an RFP, and he knows all the manufacturers who do this, rather than having to do it ourselves. We can save money by paying 50% upfront. And we do have fund balance that would allow us to do that. But we would very quickly, if we get the grant, get reimbursement from it. We will be looking to have at least one visit to the van as it is completed and see, yes, that's exactly what we want. And those things are in places that we want. It will have its own network and Wi-Fi connectivity, so you can drive it into a neighborhood and or into an event and set up Wi-Fi that people can then access a network through. We're looking at having the ability to have the public walk onto a vehicle. And we're probably looking at about 28 feet long. You can have it be that long and not have to have a commercial driver's license. That's a concern if it gets too heavy. It's not based on the length of the vehicle. It's based on the weight. So if you got a school bus type, it would be 32 feet. If the other types, and we're looking at the other types, we think about 36 feet, but you've probably got to do that. So we're thinking probably about 28 feet. I think Calvert's is 24. We are working with the county. You have to have a power source for the vehicle. And there is a, it wouldn't be too difficult to set up at Leonard Town because we put a power to go out to where the sign is. It was supposed to be an electric sign, so there's power running out that way. It shouldn't be too expensive to trench something so we can power it there. If necessary, we can have it at Lexington Park. We want to do children's programming there. We want to have, so the ability to have small programs onboard, but then also have an awning where we could extend an awning and have programming under that. Makerspace. We're looking at having staff of two, a driver plus a person who would be onboard and so that they could do some programming or, and it's also possible that we could have community partnerships with the Health Department, with the Social Services Department. We are reaching out to have them provide letters. And Janice, later today, I'll be providing a letter to you for, that they like the N double A C P to sign off on, to support this grant project. And I think we can put together something very strong. Looking at diesel on this, because the diesel vehicles last longer than gas vehicles. And although there might be a slight fuel premium, you more than make it up over time. We're looking at two doors, and a rear door would have the ability to have a handicap entrance. That's not required on a vehicle like this. We just think it would be good. Skylights that are translucent to kind of prevent that kind of closet like feeling. Our exterior would have our logo would say Mobile Library, but we're not looking at a lot of chrome on the vehicle or a lot of graphics because it's more expensive. And those graphics can date quickly. You have to have a generator. There are other options, including full onboard batteries, but that's very expensive, although quiet. A hybrid system is a generator with a battery pack. And we're looking at that as an option. I'm sorry, we're looking at that kind of hybrid system as what we'd standard have. We'd have a generator, but batteries. So there'd be times we could turn the generator off and still run a program. We want to use environmentally conscious materials, but not if that's going to cost us a premium. We have a people counter, refrigerator, microwave, an AV system that will allow us to do programming, an external screen of 55 to 80 inches, so you could have library announcements and help for the programming, a video surveillance system with cameras outside. So you, when you're backing it up, you're not going to run over any little children, a security system. And where it's going to work is you're going to have like posts built in. And there'll be modules that you can put into those. So it might be a module, a stack of books that you can take out. You can put on a lift, you can put on the ground, you can roll it into, say, a senior center, or you could have people come and look at that right there, that will free programming space inside. So we're going to get a sense of the literary interest for the shelving and create an opening day collection. It will support laptops. We'll have workstations. We'll have a printer. We're looking at Starlink satellite Wi-Fi technology so that we can try to get around the fact that cellular service in the county is very poor. So no matter where we were with the vehicle, you'd be able to have the Wi-Fi connectivity. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I'm expecting very soon a prospectus from our consultant that we can use to write the grant proposal. Yes, Carolyn?
Do we have anybody that has identified on staff that is comfortable driving a vehicle of that length?
We're going to have to find somebody, but we're going to have to be hiring somebody, basically, is what we're going to ask for FTEs. And I'm sure we can find somebody. I'm perfectly comfortable driving a vehicle that length, but I obviously am not going to be the one doing it. But I think this is going to be a position that we hire for. And yes, we'll have to find somebody.
Having, I used to have a CDL on this. This is not a comfort level for everybody.
No, that's understood. But I think I think we've got some staff who will be pretty comfortable doing this.
It's premature now, but at some point, we need to make sure our liability and
It's premature now, but at some point we need to make sure our liability insurance is notified and they're aware of it, see what impact it may have on our coverage.
Yes, and that will be, you know, there's going to be maintenance costs on this and we'll ask in the grant for the initial year for all this, but then, and I'm expecting $300,000, a grant request. But over time, yes, that's going to be an increase in cost for us. We've already started talking to the county commissioners who are amenable to more staff. And I think we'd have to have that since we're pretty bare bones already to make this sustainable. But yeah. Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
With this, are we thinking about, you know, how, I guess that would come later, how you would go about programming and checking out and checking in if people would be thinking they could stop, put their, you know, checkout books there?
Absolutely, yes.
And bring them back there?
Yes.
Things like that. And how sure are we? Are we going to get this grant?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that a given that we're going to get the grant funds?
No, no, it's far from a given. I think we'll put together a very strong application. It's not impossible. There's 3.3 million additional funds through ARPA available to Maryland libraries. So obviously we're asking for a large chunk of that. But I think that we can put together a very strong application, but no, there's no guarantee we're going to get it. But I like having the consultant onboard telling us everything that this will can, you know, will be in case we ever can come up with some funding. Florida and Calvert is getting ready to launch theirs. Charles has had theirs for two, three years now. So, you know, we've got so many rural areas that I think that this will be a good thing. But just going to daycares alone or going to Cedar Lane alone, I mean, right now, we're trying to ask the county to put a bus station in at Leonardtown because there are people from Cedar Lane without cars. And if the bus isn't stopped there and the nearest stop is the government center, they're not going to be able to get to the library. So we want to be able to take, in many cases, the library to people. John, you had a question?
A couple of them, if I may. Are you leaning or is the consultant leaning toward any particular brand of chassis on which to build this thing?
These are all done custom and there are several makers who do them. One concern we'll have is that bookmobiles have become so in high demand that getting one done in a year, which we, you know, we've got a year to spend the grant money, can be a challenge. But in terms of chassis, as I say, these, these tend to be built on from ground up and they are, they are fairly custom.
Yeah, the backend, but they, they put it on somebody's platform or GM or, I don't know, who's making?
I think the different manufacturers vary, but I'll have to get an answer to that question for you.
I don't disagree with the notion of diesel, but for maintenance purposes, is there anybody down here that you could rely on for diesel maintenance?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Who, where?
There's some, especially below Leonardtown, there's a, there's a couple of different diesel places.
Okay.
Yeah.
The county also has some diesel vehicles. I mean, we've been looking into this and, you know, I, I think that that's not going to be the problem. We were concerned about a fuel source and trying to find out if the county has, the way it does for gas. So the van we currently have, we can pull up, we get a slightly better price on gasoline. I don't know if they've got something for diesel or not. But the consultant's really aiming us that way, saying that you'd probably get at least another four years out of the vehicle in terms of the wear and tear on the engine if you go diesel rather than gasoline. So you can make up over time some of the extra costs.
And I noticed on your third bullet point, we don't have to go through county procurement.
No, we do not.
Can you verify that?
No, I know that. We're separate financially from the county. We do not have to go through their procurement system.
Okay. Do we have to go through the e-Maryland marketplace?
No.
Or the RFP?
No. We can release and have our own RFPs.
Okay.
In this case, he'd be doing it for us and he's done a lot of those and knows sort of all the things that have to be in place in a standard RFP for this. What I've done previously is there's a place where libraries post nationally RFPs. So I'll probably do that as well. We did that for our Simply E grant, for example, and we've got a couple of responses that way.
Oh, one more thing. Let's suppose we either, worst case, don't get a grant or we get it, but at funding significantly less than what it would take to do the project. Have you thought about involving community participation on a fundraising scale?
I think that's something that our foundation is going to be looking at. And we, if we do not get the full amount, we may ask community partners if they'd be willing to assist us. And I think that another possible source of income might be, Delic at Crosby has heard about the project and says that he might be willing to do, to look at some state money for us. So I don't know if we don't get the grant, if we'll be able to do this, if we could come up with another funding to manage it or not. But if we get a lesser amount, I think that, so let's say we asked for 300 and that's on the right off top of my head, I'm not going to guarantee that number now until I see what the consultant has to say and then we're going to have to add staffing to that. But if we say, we asked for 300 and they gave us two, I think we could make up the difference.
Okay. As an aside then, is it possible, I would like to see a copy of the foundation statement, if that's possible.
Sure. You can, I have all the foundation founding documents and you're sitting right next to the foundation president, so.
Perfect.
We can, happily share all that with you. We have it.
We're having a meeting on Wednesday, as a matter of fact.
And you're welcome to join our meeting. It will be online.
Over Zoom, 5:30 PM. Will you show me the link?
Sure.
Michael, will you send me one too?
Sure. So that's the plan. And as I say, we're going to get a formal proposal from the consultant. And even if this money doesn't come together, I think looking at what it would take is a great idea. So thank you for hearing that rather long presentation. Let's move right along here because we're getting to our time. I do have an addition to the agenda and I sent it out over the weekend. It is a change to the dress code. We have formed a team to start looking at policies because Mary Ann is going to become the MLA president. And that was something she was doing and she has decided that, hey, this is not something I have to do, although I think it's tough for Mary Ann to give up anything. But so we had a team look at this and the major change to it and what you're really approving is one, two, three, four, five, six bullet points down where it says jeans may be worn but should be neat. Previously, it said that it could be done on Fridays and Saturdays. Calvert's doing jeans, Charles is doing jeans. This is Southern Maryland and not New York, you know, not Manhattan. So we just decided that we'll let staff wear jeans on a regular basis instead of just Fridays and Saturdays. And that's really the only cha, oh, the word accessories has been changed to buttons. That's the only change from the current policy that's here.
You mean buttons has been changed to accessories?
Button has been changed to accessories, yes. Previously, it said, so like, you know, looking at a campaign button or a, you know, a political statement or something, we've said accessories because there might be other things that people could wear that would present a political or social message. And because we're the library and we try to remain free overtly of politics, we don't want people coming in and seeing, all right, you know, you've got that hat that says that on it, I'm offended. So we basically try to just, don't have commercial or social messages in our clothing at the library. So those are the main changes there. And if we could have you approve this change.
I move we approve the changes to the dress code.
Okay, I'll second. You have your choice. All in favor in the case of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed in most areas.
Okay, so we have.
I just note too, Mary Ann, if you need any help with the policy review piece, it's something I'm working on at my work as well, so if I can lend a hand, let me know.
Okay, yeah, I'll pass that on. Amy Dickinson is leading the policy review team, so I'll make sure that she has your information.
Thank you.
Okay, and we don't have the contract with asset strategies, so that will be put in abeyance until such time as you have a chance to review it. I do want to do some budget line transfers and Belinda's on the line with us here. So basically, we need to transfer about $20,000. And where I am proposing that come from is legal services, there's $5,000 there and we have not spent any of that and I do not anticipate spending any of that before the end of the year. So that would be 5,000. Staff development currently has 13,600 in it. And the reason for that is we're not doing anything in person. So, you know, if this were not a pandemic time, we would have sent people to ALA midwinter. We would have sent people in person to MLA. There's travel costs, there's hotel costs. We are still maintaining quite a bit of staff development. People are doing things virtually. But so for example, a, you know, attendance at MLA was $105 as opposed to typically, that wouldn't even cover a hotel room. So we have quite a bit of money sitting there. And another place, 5,000 from that would be, we have in contracts, we have 15,603 and most of our big contracts for the year have already been signed. So five from staff development, 10 from contracts and five from legal services. And where we would put it would be to raise funds that are negative up and then also provide for a final month of payment there. So those would go into admin health insurance, Leon Telephone, Hall Telephone, which is at 52 and won't cover enough for the year. Lexi Water, Sewer Trash, Leon Water, Sewer Trash, we have to have a little bit more Lexington Park Gas, obviously. We would also need office supplies and F and E furniture and equipment new. And that, on that, we probably wouldn't go much above, say, 2,000 just because I'm not anticipating a lot of expenses in that line. So we'll, we'll cover the amounts that are negative and as I say, set up enough so that in each line, we can cover the, cover the remaining amount for the fiscal year.
Okay, so I'll make the most of the transfer of the funds that cover the shortfalls and the second half. John, do you have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor in the case of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Tomorrow, as I mentioned earlier, is the final budget work session in this room at 1:30. The county commissioners are looking at several packages to try to lower taxes and yet help fund the schools. They are talking about lowering the property tax from 2.17 to 2.1, I'm sorry, 3.17 to 3.1. Hey, if they were to get a little bit of tax break, that would be nice while still giving the schools their full request. I try not to be jealous of the schools getting an annual budget twice our total budget just in their increase alone, but hey, they're an important institution and our great partner. So we'll, we'll see, but again, I don't expect that anything's going to affect what they have planned for the library and we're very grateful to the county for the support that they're giving us. Other than that, I don't think there's much more. That's a really big upcoming date. If you want to attend American Library Association virtually, we can arrange for you to go to a session or two there if anything's of interest for you. And anything from, from you?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I think Janice has something.
Yes, Janice.
Just a community, for community information, the library has always been so wonderful in working in partnership with the NAACP Education Committee. And we are now planning our Back to School Fair, which will be in person. And right now, we are projecting it to be held at the John G Lancaster Park. We hold so many of our events for education in the Lexington Park area because a national game changer is focusing on the neediest students. And we have all of our Title I schools, which as you know, are those schools that have the majority of the students at poverty level or below. So look forward to it, look forward to the, to the continued work on these kinds of activities for the children. Thank you.
And Janice, I'll be, I'll be joining your meeting this evening. I'm hopeful that maybe a Leonardtown Rotary can help support that event and we're looking forward to hearing more about it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Be a good adjourned.
Thank you.